I call this the March twenty twenty-three meeting of Lincoln County Commission to Order. Our invocation tonight will be given by Bruce McVay. Bruce is the Minister of the First Presbyterian Church. Our pledge of allegiance to our flag will be given by the children of Eli and Jessica Buckley, Evelyn Gray, Claire, Matt, and Molly Buckley. So if y'all would come up, please, and Bruce will return the invocation, and the Buckleys will give a pledge to the flag.
Many of you might know that Mr. Rogers was an ordained Presbyterian minister, and yesterday was his birthday, and in the Presbyterian church, we celebrate that as a sort of holiday called Mr. Rogers' Day. And so since it's a beautiful day in this neighborhood known as Lincoln County, and since I've always wanted to have a neighbor just like you, I was wondering if y'all would like to join me in prayer, and the prayer I'm gonna pray today is based on a prayer that Mr. Rogers wrote some time ago. So let us pray. Dear God, inspire our hearts to come ever closer to you. There is so much that we bring with us today. Our concerns are as varied as the grains of sand on a long white beach. Yet somehow, we know that you care about all of them. We pray for our family, those who are here, those who are not here, those whose love has sustained us the longest in this life. With all of our hearts, we pray for our family. We pray for our friends, those people who know us and accept us just the way we are, those people who encourage us to see what's really fine in life. With all of our hearts, we pray for our friends. We pray for all those with whom we work in this, our county, those who have been to us more than we or they will probably ever know. With all our hearts, we pray for our elected leaders and other officials here in our government. We pray for all the people of your world, our sisters and brothers, whose names we may not know, but whose lives are ultimately precious in your sight. With all our hearts, we pray for all your children everywhere, yes, everywhere. And finally, we offer our strengths and our weaknesses, our joys and our sorrows, to your never-ending care. Help us to remember all through our lives that we never need to do difficult things alone, that your presence is simply for the asking, and our ultimate future is assured by your unselfish love. In our deepest gratitude, we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have twenty-three commissioners present in one access, which is Commissioner Tackett.
Commissioner Tackett is not a unit?
All right, under announcements, I would like to recognize Doug Campbell, our EMA Director and Volunteer Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We found out kind of early in the month that the Governor had enacted a Recognize the Volunteer Firefighter Week by Declaration and State Code, March the fifth through the eleventh. Well, we didn't get to do that last month, so we've got some of our volunteer firemen, I'm gonna ask them to come up, and I'll let them introduce themselves here. Yeah, come on up, Joe. Joe's real shy, he's from Mulberry, you never know. Who else we got? I got some more scattered around, y'all come on up here. These are just a few of our captains and officers of the county. We've got a bunch more. We started a rookie school tonight, so I've got four instructors down there that volunteer their time in the county. Just a little bit of information, so far this year across the county, we've responded to right at three calls per day, one hundred and sixty-seven calls. We've had about a hundred, a little over a hundred medical calls, twenty vehicle accidents, thirteen traffic hazard calls, eleven fire alarm calls, eight brush fires, eight structure fires, and one search and rescue. So in amongst all of the training that's required, which is roughly about sixty hours a year, they're running calls and maintaining equipment and everything. So I was glad the Governor put that out. I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing us to come up. If you would introduce yourselves, and maybe give them a round of applause.
I'm Sammy Tucker, I'm with Blanche Fire Department. I've been there for about twenty-seven years, and I'm the captain.
John Hebrew, Park City, fifteen years.
Michael Jones, the Lord, did have fifteen years.
Chris Gough, I've been there with Park City for three years.
I would entertain a motion for approval of minutes from our February twenty-first meeting. Can I, Commissioner Bradford makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
God, Commissioner Walker, I say second. Any questions, comments on those how they were printed, if you should receive? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There were nine committee meeting minutes in your packet. I would entertain a motion acknowledging receipt of those. Commissioner Guntzerburg makes that motion, second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions on that item? All in favor acknowledge receipt of that. Please acknowledge by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Our next item, consideration for approval of resolution honoring the memory of the late Buford Ray Moffett, the former Commissioner of Lincoln County. We're gonna read it first.
Served on personnel committee, been in for twenty years. Does agree.
Okay, this is a resolution honoring the memory of the late Buford Ray Moffett, former Commissioner of Lincoln County. Whereas on January twelfth, twenty twenty-three, the many friends and associates of Buford Ray Moffett were saddened to learn of his death at age eighty-eight. Whereas Buford Ray Moffett was born on October twenty-five, nineteen thirty-four, the son of the late Thomas and Nettie McAllister Moffett. Whereas Mr. Moffett was a nineteen fifty-three graduate of Blanch High School. Whereas Mr. Moffett served in the U.S. Army from nineteen fifty-three until nineteen fifty-seven. Whereas Mr. Moffett was employed by Mano Refrigeration as a production manager for twenty-eight years. Whereas Mr. Moffett's passion was youth sports, where he was a baseball coach, a basketball official for forty years, and a basketball supervisor and basketball assigning officer for the Tennessee Secondary Athletic Association, better known as T double S double A, for the middle Tennessee area, which inducted him into the T double S double A Hall of Fame in two thousand and five for his years of service in basketball officiating. Whereas Mr. Moffett served with distinction as a Lincoln County Commissioner for sixteen years, and served on many of his committees. Whereas Mr. Moffett was survived by his wife of sixty-three years, Carolyn Templeton Moffett, her two children, Paul Moffett, now deceased, and Mickey Moffett, numerous grandchildren, great-grandchildren, siblings, nieces, nephews, extended family members and friends. Now therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Lincoln County Legislative Body can hereby wish and desire to express to the family of Mr. Moffett our sincere condolences and sympathy, and to express to them, as well as his many friends and associates, our sincere appreciation for the many years of devoted and distinguished service rendered to Lincoln County and this community by Mr. Moffett. And be it further resolved that this resolution will respect and esteem be spread upon the minutes of the Lincoln County Legislative Body. That a copy there I'll be forwarding to his wife Carolyn Moffett and his son Mickey Moffett, this the twenty-first day of February, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, Commissioner Bradford made the motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mitchell, second there. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
If the family would, Miss Carolyn and Mickey and you, and the family of Ms. Moffett, please stand. Thank y'all for your support of me on that new service to our county, we sure appreciate it, thank you. Okay, our next item is consideration for approval or a three-star physical confirmation. This was in, and this is just a formality for us to apply for any of the grants through the three-star program. We have to adopt this annually. All the things at the bottom there are in order and have been adopted. So I have a confirmation that we approve this resolution of these requirements. Commissioner Bradford, Commissioner Sprague makes a motion, any questions or comments on this? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Next item, consideration for approval of resolution concerning opioid settlement funds. Mr. Ed, did everyone get this and understand? Last month, we approved a lease signing to accept that hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of opioid money. This is a signing that we will participate in Attorney General's program, and the ones that are on that are different companies than what we already got money for. This is Walmart, CGS, Walgreens, there's another company on there, Paladins, and Tifa Pharmaceuticals on that. Any questions on that? We're just joining with a large group that the Attorney General has, and we need to get on that because of the group. If we all get on it, the group will be getting more money than if we do it separately. We've never done any separate lawsuits on this. Any other questions? Any questions? You entertain a motion for approval, then us proceed on that. Both of you. Commissioner Guntzerburg, Commissioner Haynes, next, second. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Our next item, I think Commissioner Cunningham is gonna take care of this on the resolution about our, Commissioner, I'll go.
Well, basically, we had our attorney, Sean Henry from T W, was with us at the recess budget meeting that we had a little while ago. We went into executive session, and we had talked to him, and the commission members were able to ask him questions about legally, you know, what we're supposed to do here. This resolution was written by him, and it was basically the judge carrying out the judge's orders, Judge Cox's orders from a recent case that we had. So, I mean, that's the gist of the resolution. If you hadn't had a chance to read it, please, the Mayor will give you a second, but it's pretty straightforward.
Everybody need time to read, everybody had a chance to read over it. The Budget Committee approved it unanimously, and I entertain a motion under the effect of the Commission's seat fifty.
I like motion of first motion.
Mr. Bradford makes a motion for a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Bradford, second, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved, thank you. Our next one, Road Sub-Detective Tim Gill, an update on our state aid program. Did everyone get one of these?
I think everybody did. I didn't know, I didn't miss them. I don't know, a lot of you can keep it up with the state senate what they're doing up there, but they've got a House bill, a state bill, and a senate bill that they're trying to get passed. It's three billion dollars in roadwork within Tennessee, the state of Tennessee, D L T's gonna do that. And in that bill, the county, Lincoln County stands to gain about three million dollars in it's for state aid program, which covers bridges and roads. Currently, we receive about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on our state aid for roads and about a hundred and eighty thousand for bridges, which does go very far. I mean, you take, it costs us on a state aid road about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a mile to pave a state aid road, and these bridges have gotten outside. I mean, we have to let our funds build up to do a road. We've done pretty good with it, but this three million would go a long ways for hip. It would do about twenty-five miles of roads on the state aid program. But not all roads qualify for the state aid program. We're only able to put twenty percent of our roads in this state aid program. Most of them are main thoroughfares and stuff like that, so. Twenty-five miles is not a lot when you consider we got eight hundred and sixty-five miles, so. This little handout kind of goes through and explains it all. The first says three point two eight million, that includes our local match, which is actually about three million dollars we're gonna receive from the state aid program. We can use that on bridges or paving roads either one. This will take time to implement because the state has come down and expect these roads for tiles and signage and stuff like that, and we have to have all that in place before we can pave it, so. And you gotta go through the paperwork with Department of Transportation to get this done. Currently, we have a hundred and eighty-nine road miles in Lincoln County that will qualify for this state aid program. So I just, I wanted to kind of explain it to you in the back of the pack, please, give the Commissioner, it answers some questions in there, if you have any questions about state aid roads and how it works and everything. But I mean, we're, it hasn't passed yet, it passed the senate, but the House Finance Department reviewed it today, and they was gonna vote on it about, they're making a poll in the senate, so. I haven't heard whether it passed, but once it passes the Finance Committee, it will go on to the, on the floor of the House, and of course, we, our two state representatives in favor of this, it worked its way through pretty quick, so it should pass. But that's House bill, Senate bill two cent degree and House bill three twenty-one, so if the transportation gets through, will they vote on Thursday or Monday or what? They're not in session, so it's probably not. So it will be probably on the floor then, but if they pass it, we will receive this month. I don't see any problems with it, but I just wanted to explain something to you. If you get a question about it, that, this is what it's involved with.
Any questions? Commissioner Cunningham?
Where does this, where does this money come from? Is this the infrastructure funding that was passed by the federal government from last year?
No, this is strictly the state, the Governor had this in his state of the state address, and this is brought up, it's three hundred, three billion dollar package, but three hundred million will go to the county highway department. And they have a formula for splitting that out. Fifty percent is, each county receives fifty percent of their, of the pot, and then the other twenty-five is based on land area, not road mileage, it's land area, and then the other twenty-five is based on population, so. That's what our county way too, is three million dollars. We'd be glad to get it. There's no way we can implement this in one year's time, so they expect it to take a couple of years to get this all implemented.
Any other questions, Dan? And you see Representative Marsh and Representative Dog, please thank them, and then really good supporters of this, and it's gonna be a big, I don't know if it's Lincoln County, but all the counties across the state. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Our next item, Library Report, Mr. Megan Carter. You can just turn that around where you address in that. The most paper.
During the month of February, we had one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight patrons that visited the library. They checked out a total of one thousand one hundred and ninety-three materials. We had forty-eight new community members of Law and Library Park, and we hosted twelve programs with a total attendance of sixty-six patrons. As many of you know, we were closed during the month of January. We made many changes within the building, including expanding our children's area and our young adults space. We're excited that our new children's area gives us even more opportunities for more programs and more events, and so far, our children have really been enjoying it. We also added some hands-on STEM materials for them while they're there, that way they have opportunities to explore periodically as well as to engage in similarity. We also just finished construction on the roof of our building, we have to replace it, and now we are beginning the process of replacing our H I committee. We're grateful to both the city and county governments for their kind of part in our project. And just a reminder, to always keep an eye on our social media pages, website, and in-house program, we have so much going on with the library each year, and that's all.
Any questions, Megan? Thank you, Megan. Our next item, we're ready for the Budget Committee Report. Commissioner Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Both of you, the county legislative body, working together in the city. Middle March seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock P M, Lincoln Central Academy Library, all members present. Chairman Doug Cunningham opens the meeting. Item one, Director of Schools, Dr. Bill Higginson prepares the committee on the Hydrant School Project, seventeen of twenty-four commissioners support buildings. With Paul Hendry and Principal Dr. Pickens have appeared to view it on the tour, and we'll bring that out for viewing. He emphasized the use of boarding buildings, final cost and life expectancy and security issues being an impractical solution or even a temporary fix at this point in time. He stressed the importance of this project moving forward, emphasizing that the school was approved, the cost associated with new building, beginning with purchase of the property, as well as architect and engineering fees. He breathed the statistics on forest and hard zone as well as core capacity of each of Lincoln County schools. He asked for consideration from the Budget Committee and the Commission and approval of this project for a new school with item one's up, of the information. Item two, A, Judge Myerich was recognized to discuss a local intensive juvenile alcohol and drug treatment program. He is requesting that a fund be established to help offset treatment costs for low-income parents. Costs would be fifty dollars per week, per child, who receive counseling two to three times per week for their recovery. Coordinator to address their, coordinator to address their issues. He is requesting two thousand dollars per month be appropriated for this fund from the opioid abatement fund. We have motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. We pass unanimously to approve funding for recovery program in the amount of two thousand dollars per month for the opioid abatement funds.
What's the will, the commission on this side?
So moved.
Commissioner Zuckus makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Bradbury, in second sense, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Next item, Commissioner Black?
Be agreement for services for delinquent taxes. Mayor Newman presented agreement between trustee, County Attorney Ed Sims, in collection of the twenty-two thousand delinquent county real property taxes. We have motion by Senator Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Taylor. We pass unanimously to approve the contract for twenty twenty-one delinquent taxes.
What's the will, the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Nick, seconds it, any questions, comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved.
C, Mayor updated the member on cleanup of the title indeed needed for the Molina Fire Station. Surveys have been completed, and agreements of the joint property owners have been done. Request to allow the County Attorney Sims to follow up the proceedings with calls related to the title work for the owner of Molina Fire Station. We have motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Bradford. Pass unanimously. To brief the calls for County Attorney Sims to move forward on title work for Molina Fire Station.
Okay.
Just a little addition, if you could add a part of part title action, change from code, so you could somehow add that to the motion, or make the secret to add that to the motion.
Okay, okay, would Commissioner Bryant and Commissioner Bradford accept that wording, add it on that motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Bryant, okay, please let that number there, let it do it. I would entertain a motion as amended before this body to move on that as it relates to the Molina Fire Station.
So moved.
Commissioner Sprague makes the second, makes the first. Second back, Commissioner Douglas, any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item three, A, Finance Director. Item A, One-on-One County General Fund Budget Amendment. An attach, my motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Hewitt. We pass unanimously to approve the attach, One-on-One County General Fund Budget Amendment.
What's the will, the commission on this side?
Please, I'm here.
Okay, President Black makes a motion for approval, have a second. I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Commissioner Black.
Commissioner Frager, makes a second, any questions on this side? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item B, One-twenty-two Sheriff's Drug Fund Budget Amendment. An motion by Commissioner Hamburg, seconded by Commissioner Caldwell. We pass unanimously to approve the attach, One-twenty-two Sheriff's Drug Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will, the commission on this side?
Volually approved.
Commissioner Guntzerburg makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Hewitt, seconds, any questions on this side? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item C, One-fourty-one General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. An attach, we have a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Hewitt. We pass unanimously to approve the One-fourty-one General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments.
What's the will, the commission on this item? So moved. Commissioner Cooley makes a motion for approval, seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item D, Financial. We have a motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Hewitt. We pass unanimously to approve the non-acceptance of the financials.
We entertain a motion acknowledging acceptance those by actions.
So moved.
Commissioner Douglas makes a motion. Commissioner Walker, seconds, any questions on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Motion unanimously passes. Next item.
Item five, Chairman Cunningham. A, Chairman Cunningham re-informed the committee on the hiring of attorneys who represent planning and zoning office. Budget Subcommittee, our attorney is Sean Hendry, with T W, for Representative County on Planning and Zoning. Attorney Henry is analyzing the impact of students concerning jackdowns versus borough houses being built and those existing. Chairman Cunningham addressed the current changes based on the field experience of how this has evolved, based on background information of when jackdowns first took form here with the current plan, they now, they also briefed the committee on the background of how planning and zoning came into existence and first acquired by jackdowners on zoning restrictions at the time. August two, twenty fourteen, planning and zoning came to exist in countywide zoning, which create enhancing our ability to track jackdowns and all zoning restriction changes that have come to exist and how the property owned by jackdowners became zoned to see more commercial property was discussed. And in reference to ongoing litigation, the first thing that must be addressed in the site property plans and how those would be sent to. And in reference to ongoing litigation, the first thing that must be addressed is the site property plans and how those will be sent to the utility free. It will be later this month. Also approved by the end, it will come back to planning and zoning on Thursday. Also approved by planning and zoning, that fall will be completed. Then the permit can be issued for where it's under construction. A different point is what to do with seeks facilities that are already. A different part is what to do with the six buildings that already are approved. County Commission must approve a waiver from these guys. Attorney Henry is working on a resolution slash motion, uh, to present for approval. Chairman Cunningham suggested recessing this meeting on Tuesday, the twenty-first, in March. Prior to the commission meeting, the rule for the resolution answered any questions from the commission. Copy of the original judgment from Judge Cox will be available to all commissioners. We have a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, and pass your narrative. Budget Committee recessed the last meeting, going to close executive session meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at Lincoln Central Academy, Academy Library at four thirty B M to discuss with Attorney Sean Henry, the resolution to address ongoing litigation for the certain jackdans barrel houses.
Okay, and we've already addressed the, uh, resolution that came out in that recess meeting. So is there anything else we need to bring up on, on budget?
I don't suppose if you've already addressed the fix.
We've addressed that in the address perhaps, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Next item is, uh, no decisions, Mr. Black.
I have Jane Pendergrass, and Jackie Watson by Commissioner Guntner. Holly E. Gray by Commissioner Douglas. Colin C. Stowall by Commissioner Cunningham. Phyllis Camp by Commissioner Brown. Ben Brown by Commissioner Mitchell. Linda Laura Honey by Commissioner Cunningham. Sarah Casey by Commissioner Tackett.
Any additions? Commissioner Black.
Did you get, uh, Jane Pendergrass?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one? I had two.
You had both, the first two, Jackie Blockz.
Okay, was it, all right.
Any others? Would entertain a motion for approval of those motives?
I make the motion.
Commissioner Mitchell makes that motion, do I have a second?
I have second.
Uh, Commissioner Rogers makes a second. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Unanimously approved. For now, a new business, I had two commissioners, uh, contact me. I recognize, uh, Commissioner Eldridge at this time. We have requested to address the commission. If you only just come up to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this will be brief. I just want to give an update on, uh, some issues with the Planning Commission. You will remember that the last, uh, commit, County Commission meeting, there was a motion for the Planning Commission to take up and look at some issues relating to minor subdivisions. Uh, and we did that, Commissioner Sanders and I served on the Planning Commission, and many of you were there. So it was a really good meeting, had a good discussion, but obviously that was beyond the scope of just one meeting, so. Um, as we discussed it, we, we began to realize that that and some other issues are probably best looked at and addressed from a more strategic standpoint. And so the discussion kind of evolved into the fact that a few years ago, um, this body, the Planning Commission, several others were interested and had discussions and opened a conversation about a strategic plan for the county. So we would like to reintroduce that discussion and, and start talking about that again. We think that has some tremendous benefits for the county. So what we decided in the Planning Commission, we will be holding, uh, a, a work session. Uh, Paul Braden is the chairman, he's going to be trying to schedule a work session over the next few weeks. And all of you will be invited, we want this to be as inclusive and transparent as possible. We want input from as many people as we can get, just to start talking about, is this a good idea? Um, and, you know, I personally think being proactive is better than being reactive. And a strategic plan could address a lot of different aspects of our county from all kinds of development issues, the schools, the roads, the infrastructure, law enforcement. There's a lot of things that it'll touch, so, uh, we think it's worthwhile to at least have this discussion. So we're going to ask, uh, once we set the, the work session, we're going to ask that all the county commissioners participate, that you talk to your constituents, that you talk to as many people as you can and, and bring your ideas to the table and let's start talking about this, because I think it would be a good thing for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Commissioner Cunningham.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Dale Campbell, I'd like to recognize him from the second, second division. Thank you.
You haven't just come out there yet, wait a minute, sir, you start.
Good evening, uh, my name's Dale Campbell, thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm here on behalf of the residents, uh, at Patton Hall and IC Bank Road in Lincoln County. We're in desperate need of a reliable water source, uh, there are grants and loans, loan, there are grants and loan forgiveness programs available now more than ever according to TDEC, but have to be applied for by our elected officials. Now is the time to do this before it is too late. We would do this if we could, believe me. The A R P has competitive grants just waiting to be applied for, the non-competitive grants are taken, which is awesome. I'm pretty sure Lincoln County knows about that, it's got their share, which is great. Uh, the competitive grants are still out there that could fund this, uh, there's also funds available through S, S R F, uh, the state revolving fund. We can't do this without our, our elected officials. We know that this area is between a rock and a hard place. We're utilities, L P U, L C P U, and Petersburg. We don't know who this falls on, now is the time for everyone to work together and stop passing the buck. Us taxpayers are suffering the most. There are veterans, disabled elderly, farmers, and a business owner that has been forced to shut down on numerous occasions over the years because of no water. We understand that this will be a huge project, but it is time for Lincoln County to step up and bring this area up to date with the basic necessity of water. We're looking at approximately fifteen tabs with some residents wanting multiple tabs and more to come. We, myself, are willing to allow use of our property if need be to achieve this. Uh, we need someone to fight for us to stop and make this happen. Uh, there have been multiple attempts at wells and it just doesn't work. I think one well up there halfway works with everybody on the hill. Everyone else is on rainwater or two springs, and that's it. So, just, we're asking for your help, thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I had spoken to, uh, trustee in the property assessor's office and the county clerk's office about doing a work session so that we get a better idea of some of the newer commissioners about how we generate the money, how the money is, is brought in, and how the money goes out, and where it comes from. So I'm asking for a work session also with those three offices. I tentatively set it for April the twenty-eighth is what we had talked about, I think. Uh, but that's, that's almost Saturday, uh, morning, but I don't know if that works for everybody. It might be better than if it be scheduled, or no, sorry, the twenty-second, sorry. Uh, either the twenty-second or the twenty-ninth, going in the budget, it would be good information for everybody to know.
One of the things the finance can get up to, to you, they have a high chart, current high chart of exactly what you're talking about, but you may still want to meet too, but, uh, Vicky, if we can, if we can get an update, it's going, sometimes it's a year old because it's going to be the previous, uh, cycle of, of income and spending, so we can't get you there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I, I understand, but it would be better to have the inner working so that we know for sure.
I think it's a good idea, okay. Uh, what's our next item?
Make a motion?
Well, if we make a motion, nobody shows up and it.
Well, that's it, we, we want to make sure that we get enough of everybody.
We'll, we'll send out an email, if you'll, uh, I'm in meetings the next two days. Uh, if you will touch base with Dor and Diane to get, just send out an email.
What's the best date that works?
If, if they can meet on those days, how long do you think it would be?
I wouldn't think over an hour of free talks.
All right, you'll touch base with them, let's get out of figure, we're going to entertain a motion for this, let's see kind of where we're standing.
The Saturday morning of the twenty-ninth would not work.
Okay.
It's the morning I have the office open.
That's right, that's right, we talked about that.
Looked about the twenty-second, okay. Everybody that affects is in this room, so if you don't mind just jot a note, see, uh, if you're available on the morning of April twenty-second, we will get out an email to that event. Any other new business?
I'll move your turn.
Mr. Black makes a motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Sanders, second, then all in favor of your turn, then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no.